We're now called to September 3, 2014, Blue Springs City Council Meeting Order. If you would stand with me, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. Or, let me rephrase that. We have Cullen here this evening from troop number 161, East Alton, will come up, and if you want to go ahead and make your way up, Cullen, then I will cue you when it's time for you to lead us into the pledge. Just stand right here in front. Stand right here in front will work. Thank you for being here. Now, let's have a moment of silence.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation, one God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cullen. Come back and see us again. Want to welcome you tonight to tonight's City Council meeting, as well as those that might listen to the audio at some later time. The next item on the agenda is the consent. Are there items that need to be pulled? If not, accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Levesque.
Aye.
Councilman Lussey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Colpepper.
Aye.
Next we have our introduction reading of Bill 4332.
I'll introduce you, Your Honor. First reading of Bill number 4332, an ordinance approving final plat for Lakeside at Chapman Farms, second plat lots 63 through 66. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Second reading of Bill number 4332, an ordinance approving final plat for Lakeside at Chapman Farms, second plat lots 63 through 66.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lussey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Colpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Levesque.
Next, we have a public hearing established on the tax levy for 2014. Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce one exhibit, which includes council information form from Assistant City Administrator Christine Kates, proposing the tax levy for 2014 as 0.7489 per 100 assessed valuation with attachments, notice of 2014 aggregate assessed valuation from Jackson County, affidavit of publication as advertised in Examiner, August 13, 2014, and Bill number 4333, establishing tax levy for 2014. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of the city.
Okay. Are there any comments from the council for the record before we go to the public?
Would you like to have a brief report from Christine?
Would you like to have a brief report?
Yes.
Good.
The tax levy that we're proposing for 2014 is the same rate that was established for 2013. 2014 is an even-numbered year, so there was no reassessment by the county. There was a slight increase from the final assessed valuation of 2013 of a quarter of 1 percent, so very slight increase, and new construction is valued at 1.3 million assessed valuation for 2014. As the building continues, we expect that new construction number to go up, and we should see that bigger number in 2015, which is a reassessment year as well. So, the tax rate that we've proposed, at .7489 per $100 of assessed valuation, is the same, I believe, we've had for the last three years.
Are there now, are there any questions of Christine? Seeing none, thank you. Now, we'll take it to the public. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Next, we have an introduction and reading of the bill, establishing a tax levy for 2014.
I'll introduce you, Your Honor. First reading of Bill number 4333, an ordinance establishing the tax levy for 2014. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Second reading of Bill number 4333, an ordinance establishing the tax levy for 2014.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Colpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Levesque.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, giving an ordinance number 4507.
Next, we have a public hearing on the 2014-2015 budget.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce two exhibits. Exhibit number one, city council information form from Finance Director Christine Kates with attachments, budget in brief and affidavit of publication as advertised in Blue Springs Examiner on August 13, 2014. Exhibit number two includes memorandum dated August 1, 2014, from the city administrator. I'd like to introduce these exhibits for this particular public hearing, and, Your Honor, just make some brief comments, that this budget is consistent with the document that was presented to the city council by a charter requirement on August 1, and is consistent with the discussion that we held as the city council on August the 14th work session. Staff has not proposed or made any changes to that, but I'm aware that there's at least one item that potentially may come up tonight. We'll stand for any questions as you consider this.
Is there any other reports from staff and Christine, anybody? Is that pretty much it? Okay. Any questions from the council? Comments for the record? If not, we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Now, we have introduction and reading of Bill 4334.
I'll introduce you, Your Honor. First reading of Bill number 4334, an ordinance appropriating from the revenue of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri expenditures in accordance with the 2014-15 annual budget of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Your Honor, what would be the proper procedure for amending this budget?
I suppose at this point, you just need to offer an amendment.
Form of a motion, yeah.
Then, Your Honor, I would like to move that we amend this budget to increase the budget line item for the EDC by 15,000 to, I believe it's 325,000.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Now, are there any other amendments? Otherwise, we will have asked to approve the first reading as amended. Yes, Councilman Levesque?
I just have a point of discussion. We had talked about at the work session regarding the loggers and the retirement system in the city. Had some discussion with staff, and from my interpretation, the discussion we had during the work session was that there is some interest in moving that direction towards the L6, but there also was a lot of discussion about the need for some due diligence, they need to allow staff some time to maybe educate the employees and also complete the compensation survey, so I'm not proposing any amendments at this time. I'll continue to work with staff on kind of a timeline and what might be reasonable for that, and we'll continue to have discussions on it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Otherwise, as for the approval of the first reading as amended, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pull the same sign.
Aye.
Okay.
Second reading of Bill number 4334, as amended, an ordinance appropriating from the revenue of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri expenditures in accordance with the 2014-15 annual budget of the city of Blue Springs, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Colpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Levesque.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
No.
Carried, giving an ordinance number 4508.
Next, we have a public hearing on amendment to the Adams Point Redevelopment Corporation first amended redevelopment plan.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce one exhibit for this particular public hearing. It includes a city council information form, Adams Point Redevelopment Corporation third amended and restated redevelopment plan, Adams Point redevelopment, past and planned reinvestment by current owner, and notice to taxing jurisdiction, a public hearing dated August 22, 2014, with Adams Point Redevelopment Plan Tax Impact Analysis, 1,600 northeast Cortez Circle. These are all the exhibits I have to offer on behalf of the city.
Okay. Ms. Allen Gardner, would you like to come up and be sworn in?
I'm Allen Gardner. I'm appearing on behalf of Heartland Properties of Missouri LLC, the owner of the Heartland Building, also known in some of the documents as the Harmon Track. What is in front of you represents the culmination of several months of effort by the Jackson County Extension Council to find its next home. During that time, they conducted a number of searches, they talked to Heartland Properties about space in that building, as they were once upon a time scheduled to move into that building. What is proposed in the extension of the tax abatement is for a 50% continued abatement for the next 10 years, which will exhaust the 353 possibilities on this site. It will not change the current payment of taxes. In other words, it doesn't lower taxes, it just continues the abatement in place, subject to changes in the valuation of the property. Part of the reason to seek the abatement is in order for the Extension Council to afford the property, they needed a rent adjustment to fit their budget, as they've had a number of shrinkages of revenue sources. The owner indicated a willingness to do that, and we have negotiated a lease on the property at a rent level affordable by the extension. Also, in conjunction with that, the owner has to make further investments in the property, has to change the parking lot, has to create a entrance at the, what I call the back of the building, the opposite side of the current entrance, because the intent, excuse me, is to create a larger presence with additional signage to direct the extension traffic to that location. One of the other things, just to note, as you see in the documents, we prepared a complete restatement. This particular 353 has gone through a number of iterations, and there were kind of pieces, we tried to pull it all back together, so it all reads in one place. We think that the request to abatement makes sense, it's a form of public-private partnership, it will place the extension still in Blue Springs. One of our objectives during the search was, if possible, to find affordable, appropriate location within Blue Springs. We think we've done that. Be happy to answer any specific questions, and the other thing I would note, if you look at the ordinance, in the process of putting this together, city staff and outside council suggested an additional section in the ordinance requiring the reinvestment and requiring a tenant such as extension for the period for which the abatement is granted. If either of those does not happen, it provides for the city to pull back the abatement. So, again, and we accepted that very willingly, we think that's an appropriate stance for the city to take. I will be happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Are there any questions, Ms. Gardner? Councilman Levesque?
Yes, just a quick question, does, is this particular extension, the abatement, and the reinvestment in the property exclusively due to the location of the extensive office in the property? Is that the only reason for this, or is there additional factors that are being considered?
I wouldn't, excuse me, the moving force is the preservation and the location of the extension office, but in the reinvestment schedule, it's to further enhance the value of the building, to make it survive. Again, it's one of those things, there's age and wear and tear on the building, and so we provided a schedule that shows the estimated amount to do various projects, and also put a timeline on it, which is now enforceable through the ordinance to make sure that that happens.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, 353s, how long can they go?
25 years.
25 years. And it started in 1997?
The first act started in 1997, but the triggering event appears to have been in 1999.
Okay, so two years ahead of time, then.
Which is not unusual, because this was a put land together, get the projects lined up before it actually started going forward. And that's, again, one of the things, and perhaps Chris will also want to address, one of the difficulties when we were putting this together was just sorting through records and trying to find out why certain records that probably should have existed could not be found.
Okay, and it ended, or when does it end currently?
This year.
Like, what month?
Again, taxes are basically due in December for the following year.
So, this will be the last year of it?
Yes.
Okay. And I guess, you may not know this, or staff may be able to get it for us, but how much total taxes have been abated to all the taxing districts combined during the life of this so far? And then, how much are we talking about tonight?
The total going forward, 368,000, I think, is the total over the 10-year period. That's projected, and you understand, well, you set your tax levy tonight, so as you prepare these documents, you have to estimate current tax levies-
Right.
-that haven't been adopted, and then there's an inflation figure that may or may not be accurate for what the assessor does.
Okay, okay.
So, subject to that, you know, there's an asterisk by that number.
All right, and I guess, the, okay, 368,000, then, going forward, and do you have one for the historical?
The total abatement from 1999 to 2013 is 1,387,030.
And that's to all taxing entities? Okay, okay, all right. All right, appreciate that information.
Any other questions?
Yes, Your Honor.
Councilman Levesque?
I have in front of me a letter from the Blue Springs School District, I think, to you. I don't know, has that been entered as an exhibit, and does it need to be?
It will be.
Councilman, it will be when Mr. Cowling from the school district is here tonight, and during the public comment section, he's going to address that.
Is it premature for me to ask Mr. Gardner questions about this, then, or?
I'm more than happy to answer that, or if everybody has it and we want to get it
marked as an exhibit now, that's fine, too. Mr. Cowling was very courteous and extended me a copy before I got here tonight, so I have read it.
I'm just wondering what your reaction to this is.
I guess my-
Or your client's reaction.
The reaction is that, met with Bill and Kim Brightwell from the school district, very cordial meetings, very good meetings, very difference of opinion about the subject of tax abatements and their use. The school district has taken a position, as stated in the letter, against this. They offered an alternative location. We took the time to evaluate that compared to our needs, our space requirements, a number of other items we wanted in a site, also the fact that we have moved as far as we have on the Heartland Building. We appreciate the school district's tax abatement position, we don't appreciate their position on this project. We think this project, where there's no taxes being removed from the school district, and potentially through reassessment, there may be additional taxes, we think it makes sense in this case to continue the abatement, but we very much understood and appreciated the school district's point of view, doing their job to protect the school district's revenue strengths.
Thank you. Councilman Fowler?
Yeah. Do you have a follow-up on that? I had one other question that's not related to that. Okay. Your Honor, just to help me clarify, there is item 3 in here, which is Phase 2, the hotel center contract, which is the courtyard by Marriott, talking about 118 guest rooms and such. Is that, did that go off in its own direction? Is it part of this decision tonight? What's the status of that?
The hotel is not being presented tonight. I mean, it was, I believe, part of the package redevelopment area, which is why there's language and references to the hotel in this document, but there is no abatement being proposed on that.
Because I thought they had a separate request.
They do have a separate, yes, yes, sir, you're correct.
Right. And this doesn't change any of that, this was just to bring all these pieces of documents back together into one location, so that hopefully it makes it easier for everybody in the future who want to refer to what's going on, they can read one document that's been unified.
So, at one time, they were together, and now they're split off. But I guess that's the way I'm taking it.
Okay, well, Chris is going to be next, so maybe you can answer something. Are you done, are you done asking Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
Okay, thank you so much.
If I could add one other thing, just to be sure everybody picked up on it, the current owner did not own the building at the beginning of this. He purchased the building after Harmon had vacated the premises. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Williams, would you like to be sworn in?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Chris Williams of Williamson Campo, City's outside legal counsel in this matter. I just wanted to respond, provide some clarification real quick on a couple of questions, good questions, that Councilmember Fowler asked. The hotel, this is, the Adams Point Redevelopment Plan covers the Harmon Track and the Hotel Track, but they're separate projects within the plan, and as you all will recall, back in 2011, the Hotel Conference Center portion, that project within the plan, was amended to extend the tax abatement there for 10 additional years. This project was originally approved, or the abatement started in, the plan was approved in 1997, but under Chapter 353, the actual abatement does not start until the property is transferred to the ownership of the Redevelopment Corporation, which typically happens, and then it's transferred right back to the real owner. But that triggers the abatement, so that happened in 1999, and that's why the, we went through the same process as you did, trying to figure out what's going on here with the year. So, what happened was from 1999 to 2008, there was a 100% tax abatement on the real property improvements. Then, from 2009 to 2013, it's been at 50% of the property and improvements, and what they're proposing is that it continue for the last 10 years of the redevelopment plan from 2014 through 2023 at that same 50% level. And the amount in the tax impact analysis for the abatement in this 10-year period was estimated at 361,885.
Okay.
So, that's the timing of how that works. Let's see, I think that was, yeah, that was, that was both questions, actually, I guess.
Okay.
So, otherwise, Mr. Gardner's covered, I think, what's in the documents you have in front of you. We worked with staff and worked with the applicant to address concerns and issues, and to come up with the provision cited in the ordinance, Section 3 of the ordinance, that provides some, I guess, a trigger for if they don't comply with, if you choose to approve this, and they don't comply with the requirements, that you, the council, have the authority to terminate the tax abatement. So, that's all I have, other than questions.
Yeah, you, it's presented tonight as a 50%, and if the councils chooses, they could change that percentage to 25 if they chose?
The council could do that. We would, I think, need to renotice the hearing and let all the taxing jurisdictions, again, know, okay, the numbers have changed, here's the tax impact at whatever level-
Okay.
-you propose. Because right now, if you take no action, the abatement ends. That's the other thing I wanted to mention, the taxes, the last year of the abatement was actually 2013. The 2014 taxes haven't been paid yet, they're due December 31st, that's why they're requesting the abatement to start this year, and we want to, if we're going to do that, we need to let the county know by October 1st, so they can get it in their system in time. That's the timing issue.
Answer your question.
Yes, yes.
Any others? All right.
Thank you.
Williams? Now, we're going to take it to the public. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? Anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? Yes? Matt? Come on, be sworn in, please.
I'm Matt Brillhart, I'm the county program director for Jackson County Extension. Really, not to reiterate everything that Allen Gardner's already said, but just state that the Jackson County Extension Council has, over the past year, definitely reviewed lots of different facilities and situations, and after very thoughtful consideration, still, the Heartland Building serves the needs, not only for the council, but the staff, and the services that we provide to the public. It's our best option.
Councilman Levesque?
Have you had any discussion with the school district about the Paul Consilio Building, whether that was fit your needs, and?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
And at this point, you don't feel like that?
We actually did a walk-through, through the building. We've actually been in that building before, a lot of the same space is not available, so there's some separation, lots of modification that we would have to do to that building to make it work for our services. Where Heartland, there's virtually zero modification.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Carter?
Would there be benefit to working with the school district in that building, having closer proximity to them?
I mean, yes and no. I mean, the main people that are still in that building are the public safety group. We still would continue and want to work with the school district, whether we're in that same building or not. I mean, most of our constituents would be the students, so they're in the schools, whether our 4H after-school, 4H programming, getting them from our Eating From the Garden program, that's already in some of the schools, so, yes, but not, I mean, not like physically enhanced, no, I mean, we're already doing quite a bit of work with the school district, and have for a while.
Well, my, I do have a question, I guess a question slash comment. I know we work very diligently to get the extension, or keep the extension in Blue Springs when you locate it to your present location, and I know that there are other communities that were out there, and are probably still out there, trying to get the extension to move to their city.
I would say I have received calls from other communities, yes.
Yeah, and so, one of the things, I think, we want to make sure that we do our utmost in keeping the extension in Blue Springs. Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Yeah, I was gonna, I'm just gonna point-blank ask you, if we, if we were to turn this down, that obviously has a strong impact on the negotiated lease agreement that you have with Heartland Properties. I mean, does that scuttle the deal entirely for you? Does the move to the school district, is that still considered an option, after you're telling us that it doesn't meet your needs as well as the Heartland Building?
Short answer, I don't know. With Extension Council, how it works, I mean, we're quasi-government, we're kind of third education, third nonprofit, third education, and there's that Extension Council piece, so, I mean, if this does not go through, probably Facilities Committee would meet first, and then it would have to get before the council, because there has to be some type of council approval on, on any type of situation. So, possibly, I really couldn't answer right now.
Any other comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Matt? Anyone else in the audience like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? Ms. Colley? Come be sworn in, please.
I'm Bill Cowling, work for the school district, glad to be here. And Mr. Gardner and Matt are exactly right, we've had great conversations. We just, I think everybody in the room knows how we feel about tax abatements, and we just didn't want to oppose something without offering up another solution, and that's all that was. We feel like we offered up a pretty good solution, and the tax abatement, it is what it is, it is reduced revenue, and we need to try to protect the school district. As you all know, we are, I believe, the fourth-largest tax-abated school district in Missouri, and so, again, we didn't want to come out not supporting the MNU extension, but without offering up a solution, and so, but that is why we can't, we can't come out and support of this tax abatement.
Any questions, Ms. Cowling?
Hi. I do have one, because there's a debate on the effect, relative effect, of tax abatements. Mr. Gardner says the school district is not hurt by this tax abatement, you say it is. I guess I'd like to know, you say everybody in the room knows, I'd like to hear it spelled out.
Okay. In the packet that we received from the city, I believe, and Christine helped me out if I miss the speak, it showed a loss of future revenue in the tune for all taxing jurisdictions of about $363,000 to $361,000. And so, by this abatement expiring in this year, those roll on the tax roll, so that's future revenue. And for our school district, that's going to mean, you know, about- And for our school district, that's going to mean, you know, about, it's not a lot, but maybe a teacher and a half or two teachers a year.
Can I ask a question, Councilman? Okay.
I have a question.
Councilman Coval?
Help me, help me refresh my memory. They mentioned earlier that recently we extended the tax abatement on the conference center. And I can't remember, I can't remember whether or not the school district opposed that extension or not. I'm just wondering, we, I realize it's slightly apples and oranges, but I'm just curious as to what the position was there.
I would say we were neutral on that. We did not oppose it, we did not support it.
Okay. Of course, there, you wouldn't have been able to offer an alternative either.
This was, in our mind, this offered a nice alternative. And again, we want to be friends with the MU extension, it's not about that, we wanted to offer up a solution, and so.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? And I think you, Mr. Call?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else in the audience that'd like to speak in opposition to? In opposition to? Close this public hearing. Next, we have the introduction and reading of Bill 4334. Anyone like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of Bill Number 4335, an ordinance approving and adopting an amendment to the Adams Point Redevelopment Corporation, first amended redevelopment plan designated as the third amended and restated redevelopment plan submitted by Heartland Properties of Missouri LLC, and authorizing certain tax abatements within the Phase 1 Harmon Track portion of the redevelopment area described within the original redevelopment plan.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Your Honor?
Councilman Edmondson?
If I may, if I read the information correctly and hearing some of the testimony we heard tonight, it looks like the majority of the money that this goes for, the improvements to the building are going to be in HBC, siding, windows. There's a good chunk there for, I guess, the other entrance into it, but it looks like the majority is going to be from, you know, landscaping, maintenance, and normal ongoing maintenance to a building, as opposed to making arrangements to have the extension center put in there. In other words, a lot of changes to it are there, a small percentage of the proposed changes are going towards that. I think the school district offered a nice alternative on this, and I just wanted to come out and state that I'm not comfortable with this extension and the reasons why. The money seems to be going more towards the maintenance of proper upkeep of the building as opposed to things to make the extension center be able to come in, other than the other entrance in that building. So I will not be supporting this.
Any other comments? Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, Your Honor. The original 353 was to catch a company that had some, really, a lot of employees, and they were, could have left town, but this was used to retain some business and some jobs, and I really appreciate what the current owners have done with the building. They took on a big challenge there and some risk, and the city worked with them and has helped them along the way. At this time, I think that our incentives should be more based on business retention, investment into the infrastructure and to build buildings versus just retaining a lease. I'm very concerned, you know, obviously about MU as well, but I just think that incentives should be used for development and uses we want, so.
Councilman Leveson?
I think I just, I think there's a lot of thought being put into this, and it's a difficult position to be put in anytime we're talking about taxes. I think my overriding concern is what you spoke to with MU extension. I appreciate Mr. Cowling's issue on the tax abatements. However, I think the difference with this is, and what Mr. Garner's pointing out, is this is money that has not currently been on the rolls, and so it will continue to not be on the rolls. So while that money is no, will not be additional next year, it will also not be taken away from an existing tax base. And so, because it's not, the immediacy of it is not harming the taxing entities, and I am very concerned about what you discussed, and I know how difficult the facilities council and the process they went through to try to find a reasonable location to maintain the MU extension office. So I too have some concerns, but I think the overriding issue is one that it's too far in the process to be talking about alternatives at this point. It would have been better to try to explore some of those earlier when the facilities council and the entire Extension Council could have considered them. I think that's, that's something to be, to be said, so, thank you.
Anybody else? Let me ask a question, since you already, you've all been sworn in. How many employees are we talking about at the extension? You have any idea?
Alan Garner, again. Current preserving 13, and we're trying to add two more, including a business development person, which is one of the other things that the building, the common building with economic development, sort of a natural pairing, back to an earlier question of who we work with. One of the things we try to bring to the table is business development. So that's the current plan. The other thing to know, we've been very successful the last year, and we hope continues to add additional specialists from the university, provided we have a place to house them.
And although the MU extension has a number of components, you still have that relationship, and I think you just said that, with the University of Missouri, where people from MU still will be interacting and coming into that facility.
Yes, in fact, there's, in the expiring lease world, some people whose leases in that building are expired, scheduled past that expiration date, so there's actually training sessions that are semi-homeless at the moment that we would be able to accommodate. And part of our intent is to continue some of those concepts, to bring people into that building on a large scale, and even to use the connection into the auditorium as part of the convention center. There's actually a fiber connection between the buildings that allows us to broadcast directly into that. So there were a lot of intangibles that caused that building to outrank a number of other ones we looked at.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, where were we?
Your Honor, first reading and discussion, Your Honor.
Any other comments? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Both same sides?
Aye.
Let's roll call it.
Councilman Edmondson?
Nay.
Councilman Culpepper?
No.
Councilman Coval?
Aye.
Councilman Leveson?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
No.
Councilman Carter?
No.
Fails, ma'am. It did not pass.
No, it failed. Okay, motion failed. So what that means is, you have to take it back to the drawing board, which means we may or may not keep the MU extension. Okay. That brings us to mayoral announcements. You know, one of the things, this is kind of a sad day, but not totally yet, a person sitting beside me, who has sat beside me during these council meetings for the last six-plus years, has announced her retirement. Kathy Richardson has served the city well, and we're going to do some more extensive stuff later, but this is kind of an initial. She's announced her retirement for December 12th, to where she's going to ride off into the sunset, but she's going to come back and we're going to keep her busy anyway. And so we just want to thank her for her service over the last 15 years.
Fifteen and a half.
Yeah, 15 and a half years, and I want to thank her personally for the service she's provided to me, and keeping me on the straight and narrow, making sure I'm where I'm supposed to be at the right time. So, but anyway, there'll be more said about it, but I want to get that initial announcement out there that Kathy is going to be leaving us in about three months. Okay, there will not be a council meeting on September 15th. So the next one won't be until October. Thoughts, dependant? Unknown, Arthur. Silent, S.I.L.E.N.T., and listen, L.I.S.T.E.N., are spelled with the same letters, end quote. Now, I suppose you have before you, each one of you, a scripted motion for executive session.
Your Honor, I think I've been nominated to read this.
Oh, you've been nominated, but before you read that-
I was afraid he was going to say all six of us have to read it.
I don't have any visitors' appearance forms. Is there anybody that'd like to address the council? Seeing none, I will accept that scripted from my city attorney.
I move we go into closed session pursuant to Sections 610.021, Paragraph 1, and 6.10.021, Paragraph 9. Revised statutes of Missouri for the purpose of having confidential and privileged communications between a governmental body or its representatives and its attorney relating to legal action, causes of action, or litigation involving this body in legal advice, and discussions relating to negotiations with employee groups, and that this body stand adjourned at the end of such session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Coval?
Aye.
Councilman Leveson?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Okay, we're going to take about a two or three-minute break to allow our visitors to be excused, and then we will go into that motioned executive session.